Okay, all set, Sean? All right, welcome to the August 18th Select Board Meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just to let everybody know, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live on ECAT, our local cable studio, and available upon demand afterwards. It's also a Zoom meeting, so if there are people that are on, watching Zoom and they have a question, they can post their question in the Q and A, please put in your name and address for our minutes, and Sean will keep an eye on those. I'm just going to go around with introductions to ensure we have a quorum.
Jamie Stevins.
Jennifer Stacy.
I'm Dottei Polginetti.
I'm Craig Barger.
And we have our Town Administrator Connor Reed, Assistant Town Administrator Sean Dugan, and our Senior Executive Assistant Elizabeth Heck. So we are ready to go at 6 o'clock. The first item is a public hearing, and Craig, if you'd like to read the notice for that.
Sure, the Select Board of Easton and its licensing authorities will hold a public hearing in the Collingay Corona Boardroom. The town office is 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass. on Monday, August 18th, 2025, at 6:00 PM to consider and act upon the application of Batavis Incorporated Doing Business as Nico Bar and Grill for a new Section 12 On Premises Restaurant All Alcohol Beverages License for the premises situated at 140 Main Street, Easton, Mass. with a plan on file in the Select Board's office.
Thanks, Craig. So if you want to come up, Peter, and sit here.
Of course.
And just for people at home, this public hearing notice is for an application for a new Section 12 On Premises Restaurant All Alcoholic Beverages License, Common Victulars License, and Entertainment License. And this is for 140 Main Street, which used to be La Cucina. And so that's been vacant for quite a while now. We had an application earlier in the year for a liquor license on the same property. The applicant for that license has since withdrawn both with the town and the ABCC, so Nico Bar and Grill will be taking over that space. And that's why, if people are watching and paying attention, they'll wonder why we had two liquor licenses at the same place. So welcome, and tell us a little bit about what you're going to be doing there.
Sure, so my name is Peter Bedavas. I'm the owner and proprietor of Nico Bar and Grill. We currently operate in West Bridgewater right now. We've been in business for about 11 years. We run a Greek-American restaurant, family-friendly. An opportunity came up for the vacant La Cucina, it's been vacant for a long time. And my wife Carrie and I, we took a look at it and we absolutely fell in love with the premises. We're Easton residents, my wife was born and raised in Easton, we raised our children in Easton. We also own Doyle's Pub and Grill in Easton. I was here about nine and a half years ago with some familiar faces and some new faces as well to do the same thing. So we're ingratiated in the community, love our community, we love being in Easton, obviously living here, love doing business in Easton. You know, it's been a great experience owning Doyle's for nine and a half years and hopefully for a long time further. And now it's an opportunity to expand in, to go into the form of La Cucina and, like I said, bring that family-friendly atmosphere to the center of town. We feel that it's tumbleweeds at night, honestly, it's vacant at night. They've done a wonderful job revitalizing the town during the day. When you go down there in the day, it's beautiful, it's lively. We would like to do the same thing at night.
Excellent. Well, you have a really good track record at your other restaurants, so that's definitely a bonus. And Greek restaurant is not something that we have. So I've heard a lot of people that are saying great things about that, really looking forward to it. Any questions from the board?
I would say thank you, very excited, yeah. It's been, obviously, I've always been hoping somebody would come in and fill this void. Is it going to be called Nico's Bar and Grill? Would it be, because you have one now.
So it's now, so.
In West Bridgewater?
Yeah, so we're in the process of selling that building and moving the operation over here.
Got it, so it won't be two?
It won't be two, because we already own the two businesses. I'm trying to bring everything over here. And honestly, I'm very a hands-on business owner, and I like to be in the stores. And honestly, the way I run my business, it'd be a little difficult to have the three stores going, so I can bring more of a focus and be there. It's easier to operate the way I operate, being just the two stores.
When do you see yourself, in ideal, if everything goes smooth, when would you be up and running?
Sometime in the fall, honestly. I feel we've already behind the scenes been doing a lot of work to get the store ready. It's in great shape already. The management team's already been hired, the chefs, executive chefs, sous chefs, general managers, managers, everybody's been hired, everyone's in place. We do have plenty of positions for bartenders, service, you know, people for a part-time basis. But the, you know, the salaried-heavy employees have already been hired.
Super exciting.
Yeah, so hopefully sometime if all goes well. It all depends on, obviously, the licensing and the timing of that, but we'd love to be open sometime in the fall.
Great.
Fantastic, thank you both.
Thank you.
And I'll just echo the thank you as well. My parents are going to be so excited because they love your restaurant.
Oh, thank you very much.
They're in Stoughton, so it's a lot closer.
Okay.
So, you know, thank you and looking very forward to it. And I love what you're saying about bringing some more, like, kind of life to the downtown area. I live right off that neighborhood, so I feel that having more kind of energy at night is not a bad thing.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very, very pleased that you decided to come to Easton.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much.
And one of the other things that I think is really great is the number of employees that you're going to have here, that you're going to employ in this area that will be coming to Easton and maybe shop on their way out of Easton as well, or.
Yeah.
So what did you say about 60?
Yeah, we estimate about 60 to 65 employees. I mean, you figure on a Friday night for a place that seats as many as you guys have a floor plan, we're going to have to vote 25 people on staff on a Friday, Saturday night to busier evenings. So when you figure out your logistics on how many people you need, it estimates about 65 people right now. So currently, we employ 45 at Doyle's right now, and that's a good par staff, that's when I'm fully staffed. And I anticipate if you add another 20, 65, we'll be employing 110 people in the Easton area.
That's excellent.
That's awesome.
All right, the only other thing that I'm going to say, it's more of a housekeeping issue, because we've gone through this with you before.
Sure, of course.
But we are a college town and we care very deeply about.
I understand, yeah.
Serving appropriately, so we do have compliance checks during the year where an underage operative will come in and ask for a drink. And if nobody asks for an ID, they fail the compliance test. So we have not seen you here before that, so that's a good sign.
Yep.
And I'm sure that you already have all your staff trained, because I believe that you've been doing that at your other locations as well.
Yeah, we do, we have a great track record even from when I was a bar manager to ownership. But knock on wood, almost 30 years in the business, I've never, never been one instance that I've been tagged. So I continue, I plan on continuing that track record here.
Excellent.
That's excellent.
All right, Craig, do you want to make a motion?
So I've moved to approve the new Section 12 On Premises Restaurant All Alcohol Beverages License at 140 Main Street, Easton, Mass. Doing Business as Nico's, Nico Bar and Grill.
Second.
Wait, there was three.
Sorry, could I?
Common Vic and Entertainment.
Yes, could I just propose including the remainder of the licenses as well?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The Common Victular and Entertainment.
Okay, she did it for me, all right, okay.
We'll piece that together pretty quick in a minute. So that's Barger.
Second.
And Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Excellent, congratulations. If there's anything we could do to help, let us know.
Great.
And we're excited for the grand opening.
And we're excited to be here.
I'm looking forward to the grand opening.
We'll let you know as soon as we know. Thank you very much, and once again, look forward to continuing in business here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you both.
Great, the second item on the agenda that we have is recognizing our Director of Planning and Economic Development, Stephanie Danielson's retirement. So Sean, Connor, do you want to lead us into that?
Sure, thanks, Dottei. So as the board is aware, and some of the folks in this room who've worked with Stephanie likely know, Stephanie is finishing her last month here in Easton. This is actually her last board meeting that she will be in front of. And true to form, she isn't just here to have the nice, easy part. She has some contract stuff later in the evening, always working, but is concluding a really incredible career here. And so I prepared some notes for the board, but I'm going to read through most of them. Stephanie, from my piece, which is that Stephanie's had a distinguished and impactful career here working with the town. She's been a cornerstone in our planning and development efforts for nearly two decades and began her tenure in 2006 as a land use planner and later advanced to Assistant Planning Director and Environmental Planner. And in September of 2016 was appointed as the Director of Planning and Economic Development, a role which, in which she's led numerous initiatives aimed at fostering sustainable growth and enhancing the town's quality of life. Just some of these include winning millions in grants spanning economic development, environmental preservation, climate resiliency, and housing production. I pointed out, as we were going through a very hard budget cycle last spring, that Stephanie's department, on average, for every $1 of local tax money we invest in our budget, brings back more than $3 in state and federal grants. And that's been the average that they've produced in the past five years, which is exceptional, because they have no grant writer, and neither does the entire town. Stephanie has provided invaluable support for significant zoning reform of the planning board. She's had a lead role in all of her different titles in transitioning Easton to online permitting across all the boards and departments, working to establish a diff district in five corners, which significantly reduced the financial impact of infrastructure enhancements in that key development district, and working directly with our residents and Frontis Village Neighborhood Collaborative in a really impactful way. She has been instrumental in numerous inter-agency negotiations, including most recently the IMA with the city of Brockton for sewer in the industrial park, which is something Easton has sought for 20 years. Stephanie's tenure spans Easton's compliance with 40B, along with securing voter approval of 48 Section 3, also known as the MBTA Communities Act, designation of Easton as a housing choice community, and major strategic planning accomplishments, including Envision Easton and its ongoing update that we're doing right now, the Massachusetts or the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program per climate resiliency, and much more. Her leadership was marked by a deep commitment to community engagement, strategic development, environmental stewardship. The community engagement piece in particular deserves recognition, because folks would be forgiven for often mistaking that Stephanie lived here, because between the hours she put in at Town Hall, the amount of night meetings that a planning director has to support, as well as being here for innumerable weekend events, community events, things that are far above and beyond any sort of formal requirement of her already substantial role, and always there, helping people and supporting people and trying to find ways to work with people. And even just thinking of it now, as I'm reading through the prepared remarks of the, you know, Easton outside during the pandemic, of trying to find ways to help people hang on to their businesses during a really dark time, she's just been, she's always put Easton first. Throughout her career, Danielson has been an active member of professional organizations, such as the American Institute of Certified Planners, the Massachusetts Chapter of the American Planning Association. She's also contributed to the broader cultural community as a long-serving board member of the Brockton Arts. And as she prepares to retire, her legacy here is one of thoughtful planning, collaborative leadership, and a genuine passion for Easton, its future, and everyone who lives here. She will be missed deeply by her colleagues at Town Hall, not only for her professional excellence, but also her warmth, kindness, and camaraderie that she brought to the workplace. Stephanie is friendly with everyone here, is not, you know, a department head who's kind of stuck behind her desk and not interacting with folks based on their position. And, you know, I've worked with Stephanie for 13 years now in various roles myself, and she's been such an important part of Easton's success. And I know I'll miss her, and I'm very thankful for her service. So I won't monologue any further. I know the board and some of our partners from the state legislature are here as well. But Stephanie, thank you for everything that you've done for Easton and for me personally.
Stephanie, if you want to come up, we have some things for you. So first.
Yeah, come on. You should have been sitting here while he was reading all that. Hi, Stephanie. How are you?
I assumed you would come up.
Not sure I'm going to make it through this.
But we have our two state representatives here, and they both brought citations for you, so.
Yes, we have a joint citation.
A joint citation.
So go over here, maybe?
Yeah, and you can move that mic, just, yeah, right up this way, so you guys have more room.
That doesn't amplify, but it broadcasts it for the cable.
Okay, well, I can speak loudly also. So this is a citation from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts House of Representatives. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Stephanie Danielson in recognition of your retirement as Director of Planning and Economic Development after many years of dedicated service to the town of Easton.
The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. So it is given this 18th day of August 2025 at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, is signed by the Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, as well as State Representative Bridget Plouffe and myself. So we want to extend our congratulations and best wishes.
And on a personal note, it has been a pleasure working with you for many years.
Yes.
So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your work.
So Representative Plouffe has been here a few times, and new Representative Field, this is your first time at one of our board meetings, so welcome, and we appreciate you being here. So for the people in precincts, Craig, what are they?
Four A.
Four A, five and six.
Lisa Field is the representative there, so. So that was very nice, and Craig also has a citation as well.
Stephanie, this comes from the State Senate. It's an official citation, be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Stephanie Danielson in recognition of your many years of dedicated services to the town of Easton. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success. That this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate. It's signed by the President of the Senate, Karen Spilka. It's attested to by the Clerk of the Senate, Michael Hurley, and it's offered by State Senator William Driscoll. So I'm going to give this to you from here, because I'm going to lose my. You're welcome.
And I'm going to walk over there with it.
I feel like Jen and I are going to be the only ones not handing out gifts. I have a pen for you, Stephanie.
Well, we have a letter to you on behalf of the Select Board. So throughout your distinguished tenure as Director of Planning and Economic Development, you've been a steady and visionary leader whose work has had a lasting impact on our town. Your thoughtful and thorough approach to planning has ensured that Easton's growth has remained both intentional and in keeping with the character of the community that we all cherish. You've consistently brought residents, developers, regional partners, and fellow staff together to shape projects that reflect both practicality and vision. Your leadership during the development of the Easton Master Plan, your guidance on complex land use matters, and your deep institutional knowledge have been invaluable assets to the town. We will remember your professionalism, integrity, and tireless commitment, whether it was reviewing site plans late into the evening, walking potential development sites in every season, or patiently explaining the ins and outs of zoning to concerned residents and curious board members alike. More than anything, Stephanie, you've served with heart. Easton is a better place because of your dedication, and your legacy will live on in every thoughtful policy and beautifully planned neighborhood you helped shape. We wish you all the very best as you enter this next chapter. May it be filled with rest, joy, and all the adventures you've so richly earned, with warmest regards and deep appreciation. And it's signed by all the members of the Select Board.
Thank you so much.
And then we have this. In consideration of 18 years of professional exemplary and committed service to the town of Easton, the Town Administrator and Select Board extend their most profound thanks and appreciation to you, Stephanie Danielson, for your dedication to our community in 2025.
Thank you.
I don't know if you wanted to say a few words, Stephanie?
Yeah, I'm going to stand and say them. So over the last month, as I've reached closer and closer to retirement, I have received so many warm comments and thoughts and kind words. And tonight is just overwhelming for me. My mother always taught me to be humble, Connor can attest to that. But any success I have had here has really not been by one single person. One person alone just can't achieve what we have here in this town without working with people who support you, who appreciate what you do, who provide feedback, and are committed to our goals and what we're all doing here. I've been extraordinarily proud to work for the town of Easton. I love the community, as Connor mentioned. When I first started working here, after probably a year and a half, people were amazed that I didn't work for the town, because I knew so, live in the town, because I knew so much about the town. So again, thank you very much, and thank you for the honor of letting me serve you.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Yeah, I just, I'll say a couple of things that, you know, I met Stephanie in my first term, probably when I was on the Finance Committee, and I, one story I thought you were going to speak to, but maybe not get there. But Stephanie, you had a brief retirement, and it's very brief. And you, out of the kindness of your heart, and I don't know all, how the heck he got you back, but somehow he lured you back in. And, but I saw you, we were at a local restaurant here in town, and Stephanie was out to dinner. And I just think back to that time, because there was that brief window when she had retired. And I'm glad I didn't say that night, how's retirement going? Because she was probably getting phone calls like the next day from Connor to come back and come help us get through, I forget, it was during COVID?
It was, yes.
It was during COVID.
Right when COVID hit.
Right when it hit.
Recruiting is not super easy when the world is shutting down, and it was a little bit unstable. And Stephanie did an enormous service to Easton and to the town by answering that call, you know, of will you, will you un-retire? You know, and at that time, it was, let's get through this first year of the pandemic and see where we're at, and that was five years ago. And Stephanie has accomplished amazing things in her second tenure as the Director. But it was so, it was so brief, that's why I didn't mention it. Not that it wasn't significant, it was like.
So thank you very much for, for not only your service the first time, service the second time, and selflessly being here when we needed you and the town needed you. And certainly our local establishments, as Dottei had alluded to, all the establishments and folks you helped keep in business by coming up with creative and, you know, thinking out of the box, creative ways to keep businesses alive during COVID, so, thank you.
I just want to say that planning as a profession requires so much from a person. Like, there's just this package of a human being that it demands. It wants someone who can interact with the public, but get down in the weeds by themselves and navigate complex legal issues, or, you know, reviewing site plans, you know, communicating to the public whether it's written or verbal. There's so many things that a planner has to do. Patience, you know, interacting with the public who often isn't happy about the decisions that may be made. You check all the boxes on that. We are so lucky to have had you here for the past 16 years, and it shows across the community. As I was just saying, there's really much more I can add on that point, but really, you're leaving such a big mark. And one of the things that I really appreciate about you has been your patience. I've seen you so many times get up when folks are a little worked up or have feelings, and you keep an even keel, and you, you know, you draw from a place of patience and kindness and understanding, standing, and I really, really value and admire that, you know. So just wanted you to know that, and thank you so much, and I hope you have the best retirement ever. And I'm sure we're going to see you around town, because we kind of do live here. So thank you, Stephanie.
Stephanie, it's been my pleasure to learn a lot about economic development by serving on the Economic Development Council under your leadership, and I appreciate that very much. I told you that the other day, that I learned so much just listening to you talk and interacting with you. I also was very impressed with, number one, the number of grants that you have been responsible for in collaboration with your staff that have been a huge impact in this town. And thirdly, your leadership and being able to corral all the members of the Swift Memorial Park Steering Committee has been amazing. And so I'm really, I'm hoping that on a regular basis, you're going to stop by and just sort of take a look at it as it gets developed. I saw you the other day with the two chairs, telling them what they had to do, because you were leaving. So I hope you're, when I retired, I thought, I'll retire. Well, it's not, you got to have a lot of things to do. I'm sure you're going to do some exciting things, enjoying it. So I, and I very much appreciate your friendship and what you've done for the town of Easton. So thank you, Stephanie.
And I'll just say that before I was on the Select Board, I was a concerned citizen who used to go to a lot of planning and zoning board meetings, because there was talk that the Shovel Works was going to be putting in, you know, thousands of apartments on my street that I live on, and I could never think about how I was going to get out of my driveway and what it was going to do to the world that I lived in. And so when I used to go to those meetings, you were so kind to me and answered all my silly questions, because I didn't know anything. And I learned so much from you, and you were so patient and welcoming at the meetings. And I always think about that, like, to try to really be sure that we're welcoming the public to our meetings, being patient with the questions. And you were very good, I learned so much through that. And that project, I think, ended up being such a great project because of community, the community coming together. I don't take any credit for that, I was not on the board at the time, but I learned so much from it. And, you know, now I work across the state dealing with a lot of municipalities, and when I talk about Easton, everybody knows you. They know the great projects that you've done, like, many, many great projects. But, you know, the innovation of putting sewer in areas where you want to drive economic development. If we didn't have the shovel works, we wouldn't have anything in the downtown to permit for a restaurant, because there wouldn't have been sewer there. So so many innovative things that you led the way on. It's always, not always the smoothest road to do it, and you've done it with definite integrity and patience and kindness. So I really appreciate that, and I learned a lot from you about that. So I think we want to get a group picture.
Yeah, do I do it in front of a fireplace?
Sure. Yes.
Whatever you would like.
It's like you're standing up.
I was going to say, do I have to trade anything?
It's on the photograph.
This back here. There we go.
Cool. I know.
Sorry, it's tight up here.
Do you want it? Do you want it? Take it and all?
Do you mind?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll take one too, why not? One in Rome, thank you.
Do you want the board too, or just?
You can, absolutely. The more the merrier, whoever wants to be in.
Do you want the board?
Do you want it?
Sure.
I'm going to swap out just because there's going to be too many people, and I'm offside.
Before you disband, can I get one from this angle? Thank you. Okay, we're good.
Appreciate that, Sean, that's my good side.
Yeah, exactly, I got you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Next we have, overdose awareness night is coming up. And just a reminder on that. Easton's Health and Community Services Department will host an overdose awareness night to honor those we've lost, support those still struggling, and strengthen our community's commitment to prevention and recovery. The evening will take place on Wednesday, August 27, at Frothingham Hall, 15 Barrow Street. The night will feature a screening of the movie Recovery City, as well as a post-screening conversation with the director and film subjects. There'll also be a resource table offering support and information from local organizations on substance use and recovery, as well as a raffle. A light dinner and refreshments will be available, so that's Wednesday, August 27, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Frothingham Hall, 15 Barrow Street. Thank you to the Community Services Department for being involved in hosting that. Easton does a lot of work around supporting people with substance issues, follow-up for people that are in crisis. We have a mental health liaison who also supports, you know, those services as well. So very happy that they're putting that on. So next, we have some one-day liquor licenses. The first one is Stone Soup LLC Doing Business as Langwater Farm. It's for their Tomato Festival there at 215 Washington Street. And this is August 23rd, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, with a storm date of August 24. I'll read the next one, and we can vote them as a slate. Stone Soup LLC Doing Business as Langwater Farm for their Community Pizza Night. That is 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM on September 5th, with a storm date of September 6th. So Craig, if you want to make a motion to approve the slate?
I move to approve the slate of the Stone Soup LLC Doing Business as Langwater Farms Tomato Festival and Community Pizza Night.
Second.
That is Barger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, and I'm sorry, I'm just looking at several things here. The next one is the Children's Museum, Easton Spooktacular with the Sanderson Sisters. That's going to be at Oaks Ames Memorial Hall at 3 Barrow Street on October 17th, from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Craig, do you want to make? Craig, do you want to make a motion?
So, I move to approve the Children's Museum's Easton Spooktacular with the Sanderson Sisters, Oaks Ames Memorial Hall, 3 Barrow Street, October 17, 2025, 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., one-day beer and wine license.
Second.
So, that's Bajer and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Next, we have a new annual entertainment license and Sunday entertainment license for Gianna Restaurant LLC, 3 Roosevelt Circle, and this is proposed from 11:30 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. Let me just look at my notes here. Brandon Chase of Gianna Restaurant is requesting a year-round entertainment license. Mr. Chase is requesting the license to permit a solo artist to perform with a guitar or similar instrument anytime Sunday through Saturday between the hours of 11:30 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. Attached in our packet, we have a copy of the application, including the floor plan where the entertainment is proposed. And, Mr. Chase, come on up.
How you doing?
How are you?
Doing well.
Good, how are you?
Good. Just light this down. Thank you.
You're looking to have entertainment on promises?
Yep. It's the single most requested thing we've had since we opened. We kind of delayed it a little bit. I know there were some concerns about music on the patio when we initially did it, which is why we kind of staggered that out a little bit. I think enough time has gone by that we, I don't think we've had any complaints of noise out there, as far as I'm concerned. So, I thought that this was a good time to start to kind of roll that in, if possible.
Do you have music out there now, like?
Yep.
Like through sound system?
Yep.
Okay. I, I think, do we have some neighbors here? So, if you want to come up, just please use the microphone and give us your name and your address for our minute.
My name is Scott Fletcher. My wife and I own the adjacent property. And I have a prepared statement, if I can read it.
Sure.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Under what circumstances, if any, should Inabutter get notice for licenses or extended hours liquor licenses?
Sean would answer that.
Yeah, so for a liquor license, if, if you were expanding the hours of the liquor license, this is for an entertainment license.
There's been two meetings in the last year to exchange hours and extend liquor licenses, and I never received a notice. My question is, should I have received a notice, and who's responsible for that?
So, whether or not you've received Inabutter's notice depends on a type of transaction, and that's a regulation set by the ABCC, which is the State Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, with a local licensing authority, the Select Board. But whether or not those notices are required, whether that's for a certain type of business license or a certain type of zoning approval on a different board, is a statutory determination. It's not one that we make kind of administratively. So, if there's a notice that's required, we send that as part of the application, and if there's not, then there's no Inabutter notice sent.
Okay, so, so you would have, you would have known if it was required, and you...
Correct, yes. So, we have, almost to a fault with alcohol-related stuff, or probably not, I guess that's a matter of opinion. They're, they're highly standardized forms where we have a local application for purposes of the Select Board receiving information, but the requirements are unique on state forms. I believe they still use. Yes, correct. They're standardized across Massachusetts.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for clarifying that.
No problem.
Okay, Lisa and I strongly object to any live entertainment on the premises of Gianna's, and we urge the Select Board to deny the application for very good cause. The outside dining area is a few steps away from our garden and sitting area. I don't, I don't know if there's new faces here, it, people aren't familiar with our property, but we have a home, and we have a detached barn that has two apartment units in it. And the barn is six feet from a wall. The wall is four feet from their fence, and their fence is maybe 10 or 12 feet to their door. So, from their door, Dave's window is probably where Dave's sitting, and their, their beer cooler, which shows on the plan, is having an interior door, and this will be relevant, showing an interior door actually has an exterior door. Our house is, I don't know, maybe 80 or 100 feet from the outside dining area, and the outside dining area is on the other side of a fence from where we have our outdoor dining area. And I don't know if I mentioned it, I don't want to repeat myself, but on the original plan for this development, they drew our house, they drew the wall, they drew the trees, they drew the driveway, and they didn't draw the two-family house that's right next to the restaurant. So, the outside dining is a few steps away from our sitting area. We don't use it in the evening anymore because the adjacent noise is overbearing. We are forced to keep the windows closed on that side of our house in the evening to avoid hearing the boisterous talk and laughter. It's not all the time, but they'll put parties out there. They'll put, um, birthday parties, and they'll have, I don't know how many people at a table. And the ladies, ladies will start yelling and talking, and they're laughing, and they're talking like they're at a pool party on the other side of the fence. So, this is what we hear in our yard. And these, these aren't our neighbors, these are strangers. So, we have called the restaurant numerous times, and we called the police one time. We came home at about 11:00 p.m., and there was a ton of noise coming, coming out from over there. It was, I think it was 10:20, 10:30. We called the police, they came, they thought we were making complaints about the parking lot. I had to call the police again and said, and said, "You're going to show up," and they said, and I had to clarify that it was the outside dining. I heard someone come out at the, at 11 o'clock, I heard someone come out, I think, and tell them they had to leave, and they left. And that was closing time at any rate. On November 4th last year, at one of the licensing or hours meetings, Mr. Chase represented, misrepresented the interactions regarding our complaints about noise. So, I, I called the managers a few times early on and complained about the noise. They said they would deal with it, and maybe they did. And I, there was an event just a few weeks ago, and I'm going to get to the other door, but we came home very late, maybe midnight, maybe after midnight, and it seemed like the whole cleanup crew, the girls, were outside in that area, talking like they were, again, at a pool party. Dave's window is as close to, as I am to him, and I, I was angry, and I went over and yelled at him, and I said, "Do you realize it's a bedroom window right here?" So, um, I did, I complained to multiple individuals out there about their language, and I'll get to that. So, the relevancy, tonight's topic is every time the doors open, now, Mr. Chase said that there's music piped outside. I'm not certain that's true because I've listened for it, but when they do open the patio doors, like they did today, the music projects out, it projects into our yard, and doesn't bother us during the day because we're not out there. We don't, we don't go out there during the day. But the back door, every time they open that door, the music projects out as well, and we can hear a thumping coming, we can hear the bass thumping coming off the building in the yard. So, I looked at the plan. You know, I had some anxiety over the weekend, thinking, what are, now what are they going to do next? And then I learned today that they were talking about a single guitarist, and I said to Lisa, "Well, if it's inside, that's not so bad." You know, let them have of their music. But then I saw on the plan that they want to put the guitarist as close to our property line as they can with amplified music, and also, the, one of the second locations is near the patio doors, which, as I already explained, when the doors are open, we can hear the music. So, any music that they provide in that area, whether it's inside or outside, is going to be just as if we're being entertained. Our house, our windows to our house are as close to that area as the other end of the patio is to that area. So, we may not have the same taste in music. I'm sure we don't with the music that comes from inside. So, on January 8th, Mr. Chase misrepresented the use of the rear door. I just watched that, watched that meeting again tonight, and because some of the folks on the board were very concerned about the proximity when extending the hours of our rear door to the house, and rightly so. And what he said, and this is a quote, "It does not get access except for deliveries and staff leaving," which is probably a handful. So, that door is open and closed constantly all day, from sometimes 6:00 in the morning when they get deliveries to 1:30 p.m. when they're taking the trash out. The very first night they were open, I was sitting in my house with the windows closed, and I heard this big noise of bottles. What's that? And I came out, and they were cleaning up, it was midnight, and they were dumping bottles into a dumpster that's right against the fence, and then they wheel the dumpster out and all their trash, and they lift it and they dump it in the outside dumpster and crash out there, which is in a direct line to our other tenant who's upstairs. And I have a statement from her, which I'd like permission to read after. So, this area, and, and, and again, I know it's not all related to the music, but the patio is enough. Every time this door opens, the door is as loud as a car door slamming, and every time it opens and closes, and they go to the bear fridge, which shows on the plan that the door's on the inside, but it's actually on the outside, that door slams. People talk, they use this area as a smoking area and a break area all day, and one of the worst things for us is, as you pointed out, the privacy fence ends right in our driveway, and then there's a chain-link fence that goes the rest of the way, right in front of the store. The employees sit there all day on buckets, and, and they're facing our door, so whenever we come out of the house from home, there's people watching us in there. So, we, we have a complete loss of privacy. These folks, they use that door constantly all day for maintenance. They hose down their, their oil screens out there with a pressure washer. They haven't done that for a while. Maybe, maybe they, because I did speak to one of the guys about that, spraying their oil screens through the fence onto our property, and I had to go and speak to the guy about that. So, so, I think I've covered pretty much the main issues we have, and we can hear the music when the door opens. Dave's going to, Dave has, Dave would like to speak. He's a downstairs tenant. He's one whose bedroom is right adjacent to that, to that area. And, yeah, so, "We would like to take this opportunity to notify this board and Gianna's that the impact to us and our tenants is not sustainable. Gianna's outside dining in combination with the activities surrounding the service door adjacent to our tenants has tremendously adversely affected our enjoyment of our property as well as its value. Until you take steps to mitigate these issues, no further noise risk should be entertained." Thank you very much.
Do you have another one that you wanted to read as well?
Yes, I can, I can read Jen LeBlank, the upstairs tenant.
Her name is Jen LeBlank. "I am a tenant at 509 Washington Street, which abuts Gianna's restaurant. I would like to oppose anything further that might increase noise levels outside, which are already loud, particularly at night. This time of year, when the weather at night is cooler, it would be nice to be..." Sorry, I have to go off the screen here. "It would be nice to be able to leave our windows open. However, there's already quite a bit of noise, and we end up closing them. There are people coming in and out of the restaurant, out of the door constantly, which slams shut and is very loud. There are collection bins out there, and we often hear what sounds like glass bottles being dumped and broken directly outside our windows. Add to that the sound of rolling carts going back and forth to the dumpsters, dumping glass, et cetera, into the dumpsters, and the voices of employees, and it is often quite loud out there. My understanding is that my landlord has attempted to speak with folks directly about this, but it has not changed the noise level, particularly after midnight, often until 1:00 a.m. or after. I am physically disabled, often unable to leave for any length of time, and would appreciate any effort to consider my quality of life. Thank you in advance for that."
Thank you, Scott.
My name's David Ducharme. I live at 509 Washington Street Rear. My bedroom is about 15 feet from the kitchen back door of Gianna's. At the back door is a storage locker. My bedroom window is probably 12 feet from that locker. Every time a person comes out the back door, the back door slams. That person goes into the locker, and the locker door slams. When the person comes out, the door slams again, and the person goes back into the kitchen, the door slams. When you hear one door slam, you can expect to hear three more to follow. This goes on routinely throughout the day. I haven't opened my bedroom window this spring or summer because of the noise. Workers gather outside that door for breaks, and the loud talk and chatter is annoying and disturbing. This goes on throughout the night, sometimes till 1:00 a.m. I have no privacy out in my yard. I can't sit outside on a warm day with a book because of the noise. Two months ago, about 2:22 in the morning, I heard bang, 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 "Wake up, wake up." Bang, bang, "Wake up." I thought it was my neighbor pounding on my door, telling me the house was on fire. It was someone pounding on Gianna's kitchen back door to get in.
Thank you, David.
Sean, is there anybody on Zoom? Okay. Do you want to address anything?
Sure. Yeah, this is honestly, this is the first I've ever heard of any of this, so I'm quite surprised by it, to be honest with you. We've been open for a little over a year and a half, and I personally never spoken to, to either one of them, and none of the managers have approached us in our weekly meetings or said that there's been any sort of, some noise complaints. I will say that the patio is usually cleared by the weekends by 11:00. During the week, it's, you know, it's four months out of the year, people sit out there, right? There, I remember there has been some times where there's larger parties out there that were, you know, making noise, which we did have to go tell them to quiet down, but I don't think that that's a common occurrence. We do play music out there from the time we're open till the time we're closed. We have four speakers out there that are mounted to the building that face downward, and I'm pretty sure that they, as they said, that they could not hear it at all. So, that's really what we're looking to do, is, is do more of that, the same, same type of speakers outside for whatever the musician brings with them. We obviously don't control what they have, but it would be facing away from their property. Obviously, I'm more concerned about the other things they said about the back door and things like that, which I can work with them if they want to come over and have a conversation, see if we can help mitigate that, but we had no clue that this was even an issue. But it doesn't sound like the music is an issue because they can't hear it, which is what we want to talk about today, is that, you know, we have no desire to increase sound or, or, we want to make sure that they're, they're happier, if, if that's the case. But we don't have employees there past midnight usually, maybe three or four closing on the weekends. So, the people that may be going out of those doors may be vendors, like, we have cleaning crews that come in that were not there. If they're loud, then we can obviously have a conversation with them. And yes, we do have vendors coming in early hours in the morning, dropping things off, and if they're noisy, we can always address that as well.
I remember we did talk about the fence back then, and, you know, how it switches to a chain-link fence. Would you have, and I'm not going to put you on the spot now, but is that consideration to maybe, sometimes you can put material over the fence, or to do something to create a little bit more of a sound buffer out there?
Yeah.
Because I can appreciate how hard that must be.
Yeah. Yeah.
If you have that kind of ways.
So we know the physical door is about 10 to 12 feet away from the fence, and then from their property, I can't even see past it, so I don't know where anything lands. But again, we're tenants in the building, we're not the owners, right? So we didn't build any of that. Obviously, the property owner put that up there when he got approval to do the building. But if there's anything that we can do, absolutely. Well, what we just didn't know was an issue. We had no clue.
Okay.
So I'll gladly look at that and see if there's anything that we can put up. I don't know what there is, but I'll look for some options for sure.
Okay. Or ask the property owner, you know, maybe they would be considered to do something like that.
Of course.
Because there's a lot of different ways you can do noise buffers around that, and I think that that makes sense because it sounds like it's a real problem, so.
Yeah, we had no idea.
No, I appreciate that. Jamie, do you have any comments or questions?
Just the doors, yeah, being the big offenders right now, and this, they're going to know better than I do, but just having a slow, something that doesn't allow the door to slam. Now, the cooler probably would have been different because you don't want that staying open any longer than it.
Yeah, so the cooler one's surprising because it's a cooler door, so it's light. And there's actually, all that's on there is a hinge, and then when you open and close it, it physically has like a piece at the top. So there's nothing to slam. It doesn't slam, close on its own. So when you close it, it's actually a soft close, so I'm surprised to hear that. The regular door there, I can understand, but we make sure, we can't keep that door open for border health purposes, right?
Sure. But you know what I mean, like a damper on there that would allow it to not, just not, you know, shut?
For sure.
Yeah.
And there may already be one, maybe we just have to adjust it.
Right.
Again, people like myself, they're not working in the kitchen, and we don't know the in and outs of the day, so.
Yeah, well, and that's where this communication, I'm glad that both parties are here tonight. This works out well, that you guys are being able to kind of hear both sides and.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because, yeah.
Yeah, my concerns were also about the door. It sounds like it's a big source of stress for the neighbors, so as long, if that's able to be mitigated, I feel more comfortable with the situation.
Yeah, of course, of course.
Mr. Fletcher, is it accurate that it's not the, it's not the music that's a concern, it's the slamming of the door and the people standing outside in the back talking loudly late at night? Is that what your, the real focus is?
That's not accurate. I never said we didn't hear the music.
Okay.
I heard the music today. The doors were open, I assumed I was hearing the music coming out of the building. If there was music, if you, if you came over and saw the proximity of the, where the outside dining area to our yard and to our house, you would realize that there's no amount of solo amplified music that can be performed on that patio without us being entertained in our yard and in our, if we had our windows open in our house. We can hear people talking and laughing. We're going to hear a singer that's amplified out there on the patio, unless they don't want that singer to be heard on the other end of the patio. And the same goes for inside. We hear the music, and we hear the music when they open the patio door, we hear the music from outside, inside come out, we are certainly going to hear the music on the outside or near the door, any level of amplified music. And I'm just, I'm really, really surprised that we're even discussing having entertainment on that patio where it's so close to our house and so close to our yard. You wouldn't want, imagine if your neighbor on the other side of your fence had a pool party and had their boombox going on the other side, and you had to listen to their music. That's what, that's what it's going to sound like, and we don't want that. It's not necessary. As a matter of fact, on my phone, I have an image of a Facebook post from Giannis. A customer asked, are you gonna, are you, can you have live music? That would be great. I know a guitarist in Easton, that would be so good. And their response was, we can't have live music because of our proximity to the neighbors. And we haven't moved, they haven't moved, it's the same proximity, and whatever, however that was evaluated when the building was approved, hasn't changed, and we don't want live music. And you wouldn't want it, you wouldn't want your neighbor doing it all day and all night in your yard. Thank you.
So all I have to, just to say to that, obviously, that place of post was, is we kept getting requests to have bands out there, a full band, you know what I mean? Electric guitars, drums, I would never do that, that's overkill. Acoustic guitar is pretty low, as far as amplification is concerned, and the way it would be directed would be the same way as our current speakers are, which I'm not, I'm having a hard time understanding what they're hearing because we rarely ever open the patio doors. Like sometimes it's open, you know, midday, it gets really humid, they'll, they'll crack them open for a little bit and then shut them. But for border health purposes, we don't want that to happen anyway, bugs get in, things like that. Again, we've been open a year and a half when we started putting the music on the patio since day one. So again, I have not heard anything, but correct, we would never have a band out there or anything of the sort. But it has been the number one requested thing since we've opened, is to have live entertainment on the patio, maybe losing out the businesses for other locations to have it. We're just trying to provide what the customers are asking us and just operate business as usual.
Well, we're in a tough position.
We sure are.
You know, knowing this, I will say that we have heard that there has been a couple of complaints. It's mostly been your staff reaching out to call the police, and I'm talking like a couple of calls, not, not a lot of calls over the past year, but it seems like your staff has been very proactive with, you know, if you have to get rid of an unruly patron, which of course that happens from time to time, I think just a couple of times. So we haven't been getting complaints from anybody about the noise that have come through, through the police departments anywhere that I have heard. But that said, I, you know, with the other noise out in the back unresolved, I would be inclined to not support music on the patio right now, but to support it on the inside. And if, you know, I get it, you know, a lot of places do have a single performer, but even one performer that's, you know, got their, their amplified sound, it's kind, it's kind of an at-risk thing right now.
Yeah, if I had known that these sound issues were a thing, I wouldn't even be applying for this license until I, until I kind of took care of that, but without me knowing, there's no way I could have helped, so.
Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I was going to ask if we could do something like that as well, and I was thinking of it as a contingency, like if issues can be resolved, we could reconsider patio in the future, but as of right now, I wouldn't be comfortable interfering with their right to quiet enjoyment, so that's tricky.
Yeah, I guess my main question would be, what's like the acceptable amount of noise times, things like that? We obviously have to operate, there's only so much we can actually do, but we will do whatever we need to do. That's why I put, that's why we actually put the license till 8:30, nothing later than that. You know, we obviously don't want that crowd out there that late anyway. People eating dinner are fairly quiet, but yeah, we don't want music out there that late anyway. That's why we did it from 11:00 to 8:30. And even something smaller would be fine as well, but I understand the concern.
I would say I would, I would support the inside music and let's wait on the outside until the other issues are resolved, and maybe if you guys could talk, and if you, I don't know, if you could do a test and see how loud it is, maybe if you went over to their yard to hear it, it might make more sense, because honestly, I don't think I would love that if my neighbors were doing that either, and our house is close to our neighbors.
Sure.
Jamie, how do you feel?
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea of having acoustic, and they're, and again, they thought through that, too. They understand that having electrified instruments wasn't going to suit the neighbors. So I, I think you're coming from a place of goodwill. Their intention was to look out for the neighbors and say acoustic only and between these hours, and so they're doing all the right things. I want to see it happen. That's, that's where I stand, and I think they can get through and work with the, with the neighbors. I think you're a very minimal person and needed to know that the neighbors were dealing with this, so, but I'd like to see that be available.
For inside and outside?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it the same license, or is it two separate licenses?
It's the same.
Outside, inside?
It's the same license. The board.
We would just give the restriction that you couldn't have it on the patio.
Got it.
And again, you could come back and revisit it after you guys, you know, resolved, whatever.
Sure.
I would be happy to come down there myself and listen to it to see if.
Sure.
But I think, you know, you haven't heard it from the perspective of their property, probably, so maybe if you guys communicated a little bit about that, and you could, you know, have somebody open and close the door a couple of times or whatever, so you can hear what it sounds like over there.
Sure.
If we could mitigate that and then just be really sensitive to what it sounds like outside, we would be happy to revisit that part if that's the way the board votes. We haven't voted yet, so I don't know. Craig, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I, I was one of the, the only people that, I didn't like the extension of the hours when we talked about it, and I, I, I'm, I'm old school. I like to go to dinner, nice quiet dinner. I don't like music, I don't need music, and I feel, I'm concerned about the neighbors. And I wasn't aware there was music on the patio right now, I didn't know that, but I'm also concerned about the door slamming and the people talking at night. I would, I would hold off on this until these issues are, can be resolved as much as possible.
Would you be amenable to voting on the license just for indoor?
No, I think I would be opposed to the indoor, too, at this point.
Is there, from an administrative standpoint, if we do not support the license tonight, what happens? Is there, what's the process look like? Is it reapplying? Is it cost for that?
You could table it, but to be clear, I think it's important for, not to discount from any issue that's been raised, but the, the, the application from the board is related solely to whether or not to allow the entertainment proposed, which is, it sounds like solo artist, and there's a, there's three places in the restaurant shown, or two inside and one on the patio. So that's what's before the board, right? Not the outdoor use altogether. You could table it and pick it up at a future meeting. You could take a vote, and if two or three, because there's only four of you here tonight, you would need three affirmative votes on any one, whether that's splitting it into indoor or outdoor, whether that's to table it, or whether that's to reject it, or to approve it.
We vote to just allow it indoor, and they want to come back and ask for an extension? Is that an exhaustive or expensive process to do?
No, I mean, the application is already here, so if you, if the board took the posture of approving functionally a modified request of the indoor, I, for the sake of both the butters and the business owner, I think some timeline and direction on what the board would like to see as far as follow-up communication between the business owner and the neighbors, and, or with the property owner as far as fencing and a fixed timeframe, because if it's just open-ended, that would be, I would imagine, not necessarily helpful to either the residents or the business.
Well, it's probably only, I don't know, a month and a half, two months of decent weather out there anyway right now.
We had no, no specific plans for this year. We just wanted to get it out of the way so that we could start planning for it for next year. But we do have heaters and things like that there that we, we could extend, you know, the hours, private things here and there. Again, we just thought it was a good time to start it, start the process, in case we didn't have to deal with anything like this.
Okay. Jen, if you want to make a motion, Craig, Craig's already said that he does not, he's not in favor of either one. If you're in favor of the inside and you want to make a motion, we should blow on that.
Well, that's one question I have, is can we also make a motion for inside but modify the hours so that maybe they do a trial run at like lunchtime, just to get an idea of how loud it is? Are we making too many modifications, and this is getting?
You're talking about for outside?
For inside, no. Outside is not on the table for me personally, right now.
Okay, because I don't think inside's going to be an issue.
I don't think so either.
So I, I think inside, you just leave the hours they've requested. Outside, we say contingent, right for now. We're going to vote no on outside, but contingent upon.
Successful remediation.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the entertainments, annual entertainment license, Sunday Entertainment License for Gianna Restaurant, 3 Roosevelt Circle, for 11:00 AM to 8:30 PM for indoor use only.
Second, Stebbins.
So that's Stacy and Stebbins, all in favor? All opposed? So that's Bodger opposed, and Stacy, Stebbins, and Fulgenetti in favor.
So I suppose if I could ask not to put all of you on the spot, but if Sean could go out in the hallway and just get people's information so that we could have that follow-up conversation, are the residents here willing to do that? Okay.
And now you talk the line of communication so that you're talking to the right person, you know, if, if you have things, and if you want someone from the select board to go down there?
Yes, please.
If you want to test out some sound, if you're going to do that and work with them on that, let me know, and we'll make an effort to get down there, too.
Definitely.
And thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being here, and, you know, we appreciate your willingness to work with the neighbors.
Yeah, of course. Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. No, I'm not. Oh, did I miss the whole, did you miss the whole thing? All right, sorry about that. All right, next we have the execution of the power purchase agreement with Select Energy in relation to the roof-mounted solar lease at Blanche Ames Elementary School.
Sure, thank you, Dottie, and I believe Town Council Lisa Mead is joining us remotely in the event there's any technical questions on the subject. I'm going to actually check my microphone because of Joe. This is an exciting item before the board tonight, something we've worked on for quite some time. Just a little bit of background, Easton has historically leveraged solar energy generation, both through net metering agreements and other power purchase agreements for more than a decade to great success. This includes the former landfill, Oliver Ames High School, Easton Middle School, as well as other purchase agreements for net metering generated outside of our boundaries. We've paired this with a winning record of grant writing as one of Bristol County's first green communities under the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources program, which has seen a drop in our public facility electric consumption of 20% against our baseline, one of the first in the area to achieve this. This approach has offset our carbon footprint and saved cumulatively millions in energy costs to electrify our town and school facilities. As the board likely recalls, the town and schools first through the school planning committee going back all the way to 2017, ensuring that the design for Blanche Ames was solar roof mount ready, and then through town meeting and voter approval at town meeting in 2023 to authorize a roof lease by the school committee and an associated power purchase agreement. Through the select board have, we've been long planning to get solar at Blanche Ames. Working with our solar consultants at Beacon Integrated Solutions along with Town Council Lisa Mead, we've secured favorable terms for a power purchase agreement with Select Energy that would yield a 20-year fixed rate of seven cents, or 7.7 cents per kilowatt hour, which is a really great price. I think that's the first time you've seen a zero there for anything we're purchasing in front of the board in quite some time.
Pretty good.
For the estimated 340,000 kilowatt hours generated annually of what would be the solar array at Blanche Ames. Beacon estimates that this will result in approximately 787,000 in term savings, or about 39,000 in avoided electricity cost per year, every year, which is, we know from where we're at financially, is every, every dollar that we could save, especially while greening up our energy supply, is a win. So the school committee met with our solar expert, Beth Greenblatt, last week. They voted to authorize the lease and recommended the select board of a power purchase agreement. They executed. This array is estimated, there's, I should have led with, but I'll, you've had your packet, there's a copy of the presentation, which is a nice summary of the 50-page power purchase agreement. But something I want to flag there is that the array is estimated to offset about 48% of the energy consumed by Blanche Ames per year. Cumulatively, with the town's existing 4.4 million kilowatt hours per year of net metering and solar generation agreements, this extra 340,000 of kilowatt hour generation annually will equal about 79% of all of our municipal and school electricity use being offset either directly or indirectly by solar, which is huge, a really proud accomplishment. Couple of things I flagged to the board, you have a near-final draft of a power purchase agreement. The regulatory environment that these are negotiating is shifting rapidly. Timing is sensitive here because one of the investment tax credits that makes these economically viable projects is going away on the federal level, attributable to certain legislation that passed recently. And so what Attorney Mead and I are asking for from the board tonight, following any questions you have, would be a vote to authorize Dottie to execute the power purchase agreement on behalf of the select board, subject to final approval by Town Council and myself as far as the terms, just for the sake of transparency. But really, most substantive thing outstanding is a provision, couple paragraphs going back and forth about what is called curtailment. Easton has traditionally relied on net metering arrays, where we have electricity being generated going back into the grid, where you get credits for this. Because we are at or near, I don't recall which, the amount that Easton is allowed to put back into the grid, we had to approach this project differently, and this is a behind-the-meter project. So the, the, in order to assure price stability for Select, there needs to be provisions that contemplate what happens if we are generating more electricity on the roof than can be consumed in the building, but because the array is roughly going to generate 40,000 But because the array is roughly going to generate 48% of that, that's quite unlikely. Nonetheless, there's still contingency in there, and that's some of the details being worked out by Lisa and Select. Also important is because of the shifting regulatory framework, there's, and this is probably rather standard, Lisa, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a change in law provision in the contract, but there's a really good protection where, in there, which basically allows certain contract reopeners or price changes if there's a change in law that impacts the project. However, it caps the agreed-upon purchase price of 7.7 cents per kilowatt hour at a swing in 10%. So that still gets you barely over 8 cents and is still a great rate, so I'm very comfortable with that, and I still recommend it. So that's an overview. The school committee had a good meeting with Beth and spent some time going through questions as far as accessing the site, things like that. So the schools, through school administration, the school committee own the kind of, they obviously, they own the building and access to the building, the quarry requirements of any contractors on site, because it's a school, and we'll coordinate with them on that, but that's largely their taking point on that. And then the power purchase is done through the town with the select board. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I won't put Jamie on the spot immediately for being on the environmental stewardship committee, but I know, you know, moving us closer and closer to consuming or generating our annual equivalent of electricity use of solar is a, a great thing.
Well, we're going to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll take it, because this is impressive, right? So the 340,000 kilowatt hours per year generation will equal approximately 79%, I'm just repeating what you said, 79% of our total municipal and school electricity use. And Easton, it's fantastic, and I'm glad you're still continuing to be progressive here, and I hope a lot of other communities across the country do the same, and that they continue to work towards this, because we all know, these are, this is big opportunities for us now to help future generations, and to help us be a more sustainable, you know, more environmentally friendly, not only community, but country. So I hope we don't stop this great work that's been happening, and, and our community's showing that you don't have to, you can make it work, and this is fantastic.
Excellent. Jen?
The thing I'm excited about, beyond what Jamie's excited about, is the savings of $39,000, because as we're thinking about our budget and the strain we're under, anything we can do to save resources, that's in the spirit of doing things for the environment or for other reasons, but also having that benefit, it's a good opportunity.
Right, thank you. And I think it's, I shouldn't go about saying, oh, but we've done these before, for anyone who's following along, but the benefit of doing agreements through this lease approach is that we don't own any of the construction costs, so.
It's huge.
Right, so, I mean, this is just straight savings.
Are you finding, I know that with the prices being so wacky, too, having this stabilized rate over a 20-year period is, like, you know, today that feels good, but a couple years from now, that might feel really, really good, knowing that that rate is.
So I, I'll defer to Lisa on that, because Lisa serves as council of so many communities, but I, I feel reasonably bright about energy markets at this point in my career, working on aggregation and other things, and 7 cents is a really good price. I believe, Lisa, is this actually lower than the net metering agreements we have for the legacy solar?
I, I think it's one of the lowest ones you have. Frankly, it's one of the lowest ones Beth and I have worked on in quite some time, and to have it capped over the entire period is, is pretty amazing, too. So yes, the answer is it's a great rate, and the fact that it's capped is, is even better.
Excellent.
It's exciting to me that my two colleagues, who are much more involved in, in energy and, and in the environment than I am, are very much in support of it. And I, I think it's terrific that what we've done to reduce our energy consumption to, and to save ourselves $39,000 a year, I think it's fantastic. So kudos to Connor and anybody else who was, Lisa, and anybody else who's involved in this process.
Well, I think, you know, a lot of what we do has to happen on the fly, right? So opportunities or challenges present themselves regularly where we have to take advantage of things quickly. We've been working on this behind the scenes, like Connor said, we, we, it was very important. I was on the school planning committee, and we talked a lot about being solar-ready, because the MSBA wouldn't contribute to the cost savings of putting solar on the roof at the time. So that was a goal, as soon as we could, to get solar on the roof. Now, with the tax credits going away, we have to make decisions fast, and, and it makes it a lot easier when you see an attractive package come through, but it's also not like this just got plopped on us and we didn't know anything about it. And I'm really excited that we can wrap this up and, and close it, and that the school committee is also on the same page in supporting it in time to be able to get this across the finish line. So thank you for your work on this, Connor.
Sure, and thank you to Lisa and Beth, and also Dr. Cabral worked with us on this as well.
Right, so, all right. I don't think there's any other questions. Craig, you want to make a motion?
So I move to approve the execution of the power purchase agreement with Select Energy in relation to the roof-mounted solar lease at the Blanche Ames Elementary School.
Second.
Sorry to, sorry, yeah, sorry to complicate, but to specify to delegate execution to Dottie pending final resolution of terms by town administration and council.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
My pleasure, thank you very much.
All right, now we have item seven, the moment we've been waiting for. We have a very patient candidate for a role on the audit committee appointment. Is that's what's next, right?
Yes, sorry, Rich.
Rich, also love.
Sorry, Rich.
Any other exciting thing agenda, Rich?
Sorry, Rich.
He's used to bringing us all the exciting water stuff. So Hanson Bargantin, if you want to come up, Hanson. So we have an opening on the audit committee, and I'm just going to read you a little bit about the charge of the audit committee. The role is to serve as an advisor to the select board with respect to the town's financial management systems and controls and an annual audit. In addition, the audit committee shall make an annual report to the town on matters within the scope of its jurisdiction. Specific duties shall include, but are not limited to, the following. One, make recommendations to the select board on the selection of and scope of services for an independent auditor. Two, review the annual financial statements and management reports prepared by the independent auditor and make recommendations with respect thereto. Three, make recommendations for areas of operations where expanded scope of audits or reviews of the internal controls may be appropriate. Four, review and make recommendations with, with respect to the town's financial management practices and controls through the town administrator, review with the appropriate boards and departments opportunities to improve such practices and controls. Five, report to the select board on the status of the recommendations of the committee and/or independent auditor has made during the preceding 12 months. And six, submit a summary of their work for the preceding calendar year for inclusion in the town's annual report. So, welcome.
Hi.
If you want to introduce yourself and just tell us a little bit about your background, you have a very strong resume for this position, and what interests you in being on the audit committee?
Absolutely. So my name is Hanson Bargantin. I've moved to Easton rather recently. I lived in Taunton Prior for about a decade, coming up about a year in Easton. I've always had an affinity and appreciation for numbers, finances, and that comes true in my day job. So I'm a tax attorney. A lot of my work has to do with balancing budgets, income expenses, and reporting that to the IRS, meeting their very diligent requirements for trust businesses, individuals as well. With the recent conversations around the budget, the override and everything going on, I've had great interest in helping out. I think this is an area that I could help out. I don't claim to know everything, and there's a lot of different committees that have, you know, you know, great help here and do a lot of good. I think this is one that I really do care about. I am recently married, I want to start a family here, so, you know, kind of getting ahead of the game, I really want to work to help make Easton a better place.
That's really great. Does anybody on the board have any specific questions?
I'm excited to have a new, young volunteer, and no, thank you very much for coming out and for, and for bringing in your, your family and wanting to raise a family here in Easton, that you and your wife are here, and much like we were 15 years ago, in, in your same boat, moving here, hopes of raising a family, and this is great, and to be coming from a neighboring town, you, you know the area well, and I'm very excited to have you on the board.
Thank you.
Yeah, your experience is truly going to be an asset to the committee, so, you know, thank you for throwing your hat in the ring for this, and I really just love hearing people's stories that start with, I just moved here, gave myself time to settle, and I'm ready to jump into helping make the community better, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate very much the number of people that volunteer for committees, and I'm very impressed that, that you, within one year, that you said, okay, I gotta get involved. I love it. And he's also a neighbor, so, you know, I go by his house every day.
Did you guys have a question on credit?
No, I didn't, nothing to do with it. But I appreciate it, hey, for you stepping forward, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think this is a great committee to, to start with, because I, I don't think it's a heavy lift. There is a period of time where the meeting, you know, there's more meetings, but throughout the year, it's really essentially, when we get the audit back from our independent auditors, they review it, they, you know, really dig into it. It's a great place to learn about what the town is doing from a lawyer's perspective, where, you know, what, what they're looking at, and the financial controls on, on the way we do things. The management report of that comes back and gives suggestions for improvement. So that's something that people may not be aware of, is one, we have external auditors looking at our, at our work, but also that we do take those recommendations for improvements, and we're always looking for ways to do that. In my time on the board, there was a lot of cash transactions for, you know, different programs or things that weren't, like, people didn't pay their real estate tax bills in cash, but there were, you know, different programmatic things where people were paying cash, and we've been able to try to minimize that as much as possible, because we, we saw that as a risk, right? So that's just one that I can think of, that's a simple one off the top of my head, but it's a very important committee, a very important role. Select person Mark Lamb is the select board representative to that, so I should have thought more to ask him more questions, because I forgot he wasn't going to be here tonight. But you can find all the minutes and agendas online, so you can kind of take a glance through them, and you'll get the idea of how many times they meet, what days, what times. And if you have any questions, you can reach out to us. So we're going to vote. I suspect I know how the vote's going to go, but Craig, do you want to make a motion?
So I move to appoint Hanson Bargantin to the audit committee with a seat expiration of June 30th, 2028.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, and this is a roll call vote, starting with you, Jamie.
Stebbins Bargantin.
Stacy Bargantin.
Full Janetti Bargantin.
Bodger Bargantin.
So congratulations, you've just been appointed. You will get an email from the town clerk, you do have to get sworn in before you go to your first meeting, so.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, thank you for your time.
We really appreciate it.
Nice to meet you, Hanson.
Thank you, Hanson.
Okay, the next exciting moment that we were waiting for is for Swift's Park Construction, NELM Change Order Number Two, BSC Group Change. So who's?
We've got lots of exciting stuff.
Stephanie.
And you can.
You are one of them.
Feel free to stay if you want, Hanson, but don't feel obligated if you have things to do, so.
Rich, there's only nine more before we get to you.
Okay, so, thank you. What you have before you tonight are two change orders associated with the Swift's Park Construction Project. The first one is for $20,866.44. That will bring the total contract for the construction of the project to $768,844. And that's with NELM, they're the contractor that's doing the construction work. The reason for this is that we, they needed to increase the height of the walkway stone wall along Foundry Street to lessen the slope for future sidewalk development. It was understood that, that future development for the sidewalk would be happening, but once they started construction, the way it was designed, they felt that where the wall was going to be located was a little too close, a little too steep, and needed to push it back.
Okay.
And I, I think you'll probably vote on these separately, but the second one is for additional construction monitoring design by BSC. They're doing the construction monitoring for us. And the reason for this was we needed the pavers that are making up the center of the plaza is going to be where the memorial pavers, which was a fundraising effort by the Swift's Park Committee, are going to be located. The memorial pavers are a different size than the remaining pavers, and the design needed to be modified to accommodate those. So that was an additional $5,600, and that brings their total contract to $37,500.
Okay. And just mentioning, funding sources for the project include $698,000 from CPA, $75,000 from a state earmark grant, $100,000 from a park grant, and $51,350 in donations, yielding a total budget of $924,350, which is more than sufficient to cover the change orders.
Yes.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, I have, I, I'm still trying to figure out, the, the wall you're talking about is, is right along Foundry Street.
Yes.
And they're talking about making it higher, so that, I'm still not sure what.
They, they had to lessen the slope and push the wall back a little bit further.
In order to be able to fit the sidewalk in?
Yes, without having the stone wall right on top of the sidewalk.
Oh, so they already, they've already moved the wall back?
It's already done.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, nothing, I mean, for those, I hope people have been by and seen the progress that's being made.
Looks amazing.
We get a lot of, well, a lot of good feedback.
Mm-hmm. It's looking amazing.
Yeah, and, and I'm going back to the earlier recognition of my time here. I want to give credit where credit's due. This was a very tight budget for this project. In order to get the CPA funding, the Swift's Park Committee needed to do fundraising, we needed to look at available grants and other opportunities. The state earmark grant, I believe Connor secured that for us, and I applied for the $100,000 park grant, and the committee itself raised the $51,350 in donations. So again, just, just reinforcing that when you work with good people who are committed to doing good things for the town, it makes your life better and more rewarding.
That's great, thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie.
All right, if there's no questions, Craig, I think you need to do these as two separate.
Separate, yeah, two separate. So I'll move to approve the NELM Company Number Two Walkway Stonewell.
Oh, that's Change Order Number Two.
Height increased $20,886.44.
And that's Change Order Number Two.
Yes, sorry.
Jamie pointed out.
Second.
All right, so that's.
Second.
Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, the next one is BSC Additional.
BS, I move to approve the BSC Additional Construction Monitoring and Design in the amount of $5,600.
Second.
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous, excellent. All right, now we are looking at the vote for Contract DPW.
Just not to pour on the sentimentality, but congratulations on your last item before us ever.
Thanks for, I thought she was just staying, you know, because she wanted to be with us one more night, but now I see.
Well, that's why it was going to offer for, to go after Rich, because he's got more appreciation rates coming up than two. Don't forget all your recognition and your awards.
Thank you so much.
Have a great night.
Good night.
Good night, Steph.
Okay, we are looking at number nine, Vote for Contract DPW 2026-04 with C. Notton for Prospect Street Water Main Replacement Project.
Yes, we actually have two water projects in a row, that plus roof replacements for well five and seven. So Rich Tierney is here, if there's any detailed questions, there's some details in, in the select board's meeting notes. First is a construction of Prospect Street Water Main Replacement. C. Notton was the lowest bidder, you may recognize that name there, folks who do the sewer work for the Five Corner Sewer Project. This $1.3 million project is funded out of available funding totaling $4 million for water main replacements. And then the other project is roof, roof replacements at water pumping stations five and seven. So again, Rich is here, if there's any questions regarding these projects, construction, construction schedule, not necessarily tee you up to grill, Rich, but he has stayed here, so.
Any questions?
I just, great to see you.
No questions, but thank you for being here.
Well, I just want to mention for people that might be watching it at home and don't follow along all the time with us, this does not come out of our operating budget, so when we talk about, you know, some of the tough changes that we've had to make, we're very lucky that we do have these, you know, enterprise budgets, because that money does fund these. So it's not like there was an additional $4 million laying around out of the operating budget, and I know that that is something that can be confusing to people. So I think that this is great, you know, we, I know we've been replacing the water mains a little at a time. It's really, really great because there's challenges with the water, you know, through some of the pipes that are older. So I'm glad that we're able to get to this project.
I move to approve Contract D P W 2026-04 with C. Norton Company, Prospect Street Water Main Replacement Project with an amount of $1,341,849.50.
Second.
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, the vote is the Contract D P W 2025-20 Wayne Roofing System LLC for roof replacement for wells five and seven.
Sure, just to recap for the board, this is $107,000 of work. This is funded out of $150,000 of available capital funding funded by Town Meeting. So same comment as far as operations, this is carried out of the operating budget and approved by voters in 2024. It's below bid. D P W recommends approval, so do I.
Any questions?
Nope.
Yeah.
I move to approve Contract D P W 2025-20 Wayne Roofing Systems LLC roof replacement for wells five and seven, the amount of $107,000.
Second.
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous.
Not to extend Rich's evening, but in the spirit of highlighting the good work our folks are doing, can I take one piece of my planned town administrator notes out of order because it's relevant to work Rich has contributed? So something that we published, it's online. I wanted to make note of it in the Select Board meeting as well as a milestone of the town receiving its first receipt of what will be multiple payments from a 3M PFAS multi-district litigation, which is a major milestone for us on the kind of multi-pronged efforts that we have led for years and years now that Rich personally has given so much to, to address water contamination issues caused by PFAS in Easton. So board is well aware, but for public's benefit of a reminder, Easton sued chemical manufacturers under the PFAS MDL with Napoli Skolnik back in 2021, seeking remediation and accountability for the presence of PFAS in our water supply. This first payment stems from a settlement with 3M, which is separate from pending litigation relating to ChemGuard, DePont, Tyco, and other chemicals manufacturers. Those are ongoing. This payment, which we, that we, the first one that we received is part of an anticipated award totaling more than $2 million from this settlement, less attorney's fees. That's also coupled with a $2 million grant from a Commonwealth, from now Ambassador Cronin and her service to Easton as a state rep. Funded by the 2021 American Rescue Plan Act reflects our commitment to securing additional funds for the protection of our water and the treatment of our water outside of just the funds appropriated by our residents, which we appreciate. These mitigation funds will support ongoing and future treatment and removal of PFAS from our drinking water, which since 2023 has met and exceeded the Mass Department of Environmental Protection standards for removing PFAS from drinking water here. Our proactive approach, which stems back to 2019 in this room with the D P here and our home filter program, and we'll never forget Dave and Rich walking in and asking what I knew about PFAS back then, which was very little. Our proactive approach in town has yielded tangible benefits for the public. Residents here have been great and voted quickly to support design and construction. And again, as of 2023, we have three treatment plants up and running, which are fully operational. And we were able to do so getting to work and getting to market because this is everywhere. It's not just a forever chemical. It's an everywhere chemical. And we're able to get much better pricing for these construction projects. That is a fraction of what some communities are having to now pay only a few years later because the cost of waiting would have been far worse. According to Sierra Club using Mass D P data, as of this year, 172 public water systems in 96 Massachusetts communities have PFAS concentrations above the Mass D P drinking water limits. Municipalities and water districts in the state have borrowed more than a half billion in the five years since these revolving funds have been authorized to finance construction of PFAS mitigation. So it's more than a half billion just from that one lender. That doesn't count any, you know, private bond issuances throughout the state. So it's not, much like we all know from opioid settlements, things like that, ever going to be enough to cover all the direct capital and ongoing operating costs. But it's meaningful and it reflects this board's trusting of our recommendations of joining that litigation early and also countless hours, not just on managing the construction project that Rich has done, but the volume of data collection required to get into, stay into this litigation. The funding formula is based on testing of your wells, the volume of PFAS in your wells, the volume of water you're pumping. And Rich has just been instrumental in us being able to do this. So I didn't want to say that after you left. So thank you sincerely for everything you've given to that and starting to see the benefit of that work, so.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
You supported me, the least I could do to do something back for the community. And I had all that data that Mass D P required me to submit to them so that built the legacy of where we started to where we're now on detection.
Excellent. Well, you know, like I said before, taking the opportunity, sometimes things come up and we have to act on them quickly. And I think we did act on, you know, we collectively, the board, the administration, you, your team, D P W, and, you know, moved forward with building these right away. And, you know, thank goodness we did because the cost to build those three treatment facilities now, when we see what other towns are paying is millions of dollars more. So we were very fortunate to get in, to get that going right away. It was also.
It didn't feel that way at the time.
No, it didn't. But it also, you know, you, we were building those, but the technology wasn't even available and the pots weren't even available for all the filtration that we needed. So the timing was really critical, and I'm sure it was very stressful for you and the team to get that going. And I, you know, you nailed it, really. Everything worked well in the end.
It was a hometown team support.
Well, we appreciate you and thank you for being here tonight.
Yes. Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Contract D P W 2026-01 Weston and Sampson for L S P Services for Police and Fire on Lothrup Street.
Sorry, I threw you off by asking to do the TA notes. I don't think we took a motion and a vote on the well contract, did we?
Yeah, we did.
We'll go back. Sorry, that's our fault.
I'm going to get ready to.
No, did we do it?
Can we just do it again just in case?
Which one, which one are we talking about?
For the roof, right?
I had it checked.
Item 10?
I checked it too, but I don't.
If you're not sure, we can do it for prosperity.
You're on the audit.
Go ahead, Craig.
I move to approve the Contract D P W 2025-20 Wayne Roofing Systems LLC roof replacement for wells five and seven. The contract amount is $170,000.
Second.
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous.
It sounded really good the second time, so.
Much more polished.
All right, back to Contract D P W 2026-01 Weston and Sampson, L S P Services for Police and Fire on Lothrup Street.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. Attached in your packet is a memo from Public Works along with a contract and scope of services from Weston and Sampson, where we have a proposal for L S P services in accordance with the Massachusetts Contingency Plan. This ties back actually to, predates my time in 1987.
Don't tell us you weren't kindergarten then.
He wasn't even born.
No, predates his time.
Yeah, all.
Kindergarten, no, actually second.
So in 1987, there was a removal of 3,000 gallon underground storage tank at the Lothrup Police and Fire Station, and there was soil contamination from that removal in accordance with applicable environmental regs. At that time, the town undertook action, including the removal of contaminated soil and the installation of groundwater monitoring wells to track the extent of the migration of any contamination plume. Pursuant to the Mass Contingency Plan, D P requires ongoing evaluation and reporting for sites with identified contamination, including sometimes through monitoring wells. The town's last submitted to D P was in 2008. And so D P was, I think, cleaning house on their records and checking on some of these older ones. And we have not had a report submitted to them. They notified us. We need to come back to compliance with that. And so this is a scope of service to revive those wells that are still operable and to install some monitoring wells for ones that we, we can't use again. That's a contract for $27,000 from available end-of-year police department funds will allow Weston and Sampson to get the regulatorally required site, site status review to D P, which I recommend.
Okay, questions?
Just the lapse back then of reporting?
Yes, so again, I'm not to.
I know, because.
Jokes aside, so I, none of the current leadership in the departments that manage these buildings or administration were here. So I don't know exactly why the reporting stopped. I know that the, I don't know if it's a penalty fee or just a kind of reporting fee. We do, we do get billed by D P every year and we've paid those. So I don't know if perhaps during administration changes, multiple administrations ago, that was thought to be sufficient. I'm uncertain. But I know '08 was obviously the financial crisis. There's a lot of layoffs, job changes, so perhaps it was lost in the shuffle. I'm not sure. But we were notified this year by D P, we need to submit a site report. And so that's what we'll do and get back on track.
Also, back then, our electronic records, you know, there weren't a lot of systems that we have now. I'm just surprised that D P didn't flag this earlier because.
Well, again, I think it's important, it's, well, yeah, and for sake of being constructive, given the original issue was almost 40 years ago and the reporting went on for 20 years from that. In between, I believe in the scope, in the 90s, there was a mitigation project performed to remove soils. So it's entirely possible that this is just having to continue reporting and now there's no additional remediation needed. But obviously, we want to confirm that. It's likely not dissimilar to, we have annual reporting at the landfill, even though there's not been a, I suppose, like a discrete issue requiring new construction or whatever. We just have to have that ongoing.
Yeah, last thing I was going to say is I think the timing in this is really good, knowing that we are going to be decommissioning Police and Fire at Lothrup. So good that we'll have this in check as well.
Right.
One less surprise.
Right.
All right.
Okay, so I move to award Contract D P W 2026-01 Weston and Sampson for licensed site professional services for the Fire and Police on Lothrup Street in the amount of $27,425.
Second.
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, next vote Contract E F D 2026-01 for Stryker Medical for two cardiac monitors.
Sure, as the board will recall, this annual town meeting, we had a very, very limited capital budget for fiscal '26 due to the operating budget cuts that we were implementing and the question mark of if the override would pass or not having a large impact on our ongoing cash capital posture. The things that we did fund were life safety related. This is one of them. It's two cardiac monitors. It's $104,157. This was funded in the annual town meeting capital program. It's being purchased under a SABIC cooperative purchasing program, which follows all procurement regs as far as qualifying for a consortium purchase. And the fire chief recommends approval, and so do I.
Okay.
I move to approve Contract E F D 2026-01 Stryker Medical, two cardiac monitors. Total contract amount is $104,157.48.
Second.
Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Next is update and discussion, the Budget Subcommittee with the Budget Subcommittee Chair, Jennifer Stacy.
So I'll invite Jamie and Connor to join in or Sean as, after I kind of finish going through the update. But, um, so we reconvene Budget Subcommittee. As everyone knows, we took a little bit of a break during the year of PACE because a lot of what PACE was doing was taking the work Budget would normally do and looking at it through different lenses and a bit deeper. And we appreciate all the incredible work that came from that. That will be really important for Budget Subcommittee looking ahead. Prior to PACE, Budget had been meeting regularly and, you know, it was clear where we were headed as a town. And I was very grateful that PACE kind of took it and went from there. Unfortunately, we're off with the outcome of the override, which was a huge setback in terms of planning. And as a member of the board, I wasn't sure if I'd be chair or not because we just reorganized. But one of the things I started thinking about after the override was what would Budget look like as a committee? Because we knew we couldn't be PACE 2.0. Obviously, by definition, PACE included, was promoting a sustainable Easton. And I would say that when the override failed, we entered territory where we were not really thinking about sustainability, but actual, like, kind of survival, emergency mode. And that's where we're at with the Budget. So we, for folks at home, Budget includes members of the Select Board. So Jamie and I represent the Select Board, Finance Committee, which is Kelly Lamb and Mike DiPietro, and School Committee, our representation is Jackie Wiseman, who's co-chair, I'm sorry, vice chair. Keep on doing that for some reason, and Jim Hamilton. So we've got great expertise, including folks who had participated in PACE. So we met, we started talking through, kind of reminded ourselves of our charge and what we hoped to do. One of the things that stood out to me that we didn't do so well in years past in Budget was, one of the things in our charge is to have strong communication between the boards that we represent and the committee. And I think it was a little bit weak in the past. And coming out of PACE, we wanted to make sure that dialogue was open. So I proposed to the committee and everyone agreed that we would start a process of having stronger updates. So this would include creating a template. So we're starting with the same set of questions to guide getting updates. And each, each of the three boards, we had a volunteer who will lead the effort in compiling that update. So Jamie's compiling for us, though, if any updates come up. I think what we also plan to do is get all of our boards in the lens of thinking about, this is something we need to report back to Budget so they can be aware of it. And the idea is that we're, you know, capturing things like policy, operational things, staffing changes, anything that this group can start to use to think through strategies for recommendations that might come forth. And we're, you know, an advisory group. We will make recommendations to the Select Board. And we hope that this will strengthen the work coming out of Budget out of this next year, which is really going to be critical as we figure out how we go forward. A lot of the conversation at the first meeting was guided by a framework for us thinking about, we didn't have to have an answer, but thinking about kind of the choice we made and how we recommend approaching the year in terms of spend. And one was more of a go slow, draw down, reserve approach versus rip the Band-Aid off and feel the pain now. The committee spent a lot of time thinking about this. And obviously, we weren't ready to come up with any kind of answer. There's more time is needed and more thought around that. The other thing that the committee grappled with in this meeting was the override question. Obviously, we know we're in a very difficult position. And I think we're going to learn more and more how difficult it is as time goes on, as we're already starting to see. We had an opportunity to pursue another override coming out of the failed one. I think the sense, the consensus was that this was a bad thing at the time. No boards seemed that they wanted to pursue a recommendation around that.
Jen, could I just clarify to pursue?
Yes, please.
To pursue the exact same one for this fiscal year?
That would have been by July, we would have had to put in the answer.
Would need to be at an election by September 15. So when you have a town meeting, approve an override contingent budget, which we did, and it fails at polls, you can put it back out to the voters at polls repeatedly up until September 15 to effectuate it for that fiscal year. Sorry, I don't mean, that's an important distinction.
No, please do. Actually, that's why I invited you and Jamie to speak too, because it's really, you, you, you know, and Sean also were in the room. And it was a, it was a very dense conversation. So in addition to that, which there was consensus that we were not going to recommend or, and every, all the representation from the boards agree that there was no interest in that. But we are keeping it on the table to consider the potential for a differently, a different structured override come next year, which is very difficult to say because the thought of how much work went into it was quite a lot. But, you know, I think as we saw with PACE and we're already starting to see the budget, we're, we're truly in, all the stones have been turned over. But like now, we're like, really like going back to the rock pile and being like, really? And I, you know, I believe there was consensus that none of us see a path where that doesn't need to happen. But what that looks like is something that Budget will spend time thinking about as we get better information. You know, huge thank you to Connor and crew, Wendy, and all the folks who start to get the budget compiled. We talked about the schedule for this year and how that will unfold. And there'll be more information on that coming. So I will be pulling together that template. And I just wanted to throw out for discussion in the board of how we want to kind of think about compiling those updates. Again, we'll, we'll share it with all the boards in email. I believe I sent an email. This has the template so folks can see it. out, this has the template, so folks can see it and start using it at meetings, but the idea is to capture things that would be of value for other boards to hear, because again, I see this as a, an iterative process of budgets, upcoming meets, goes to board, and it's feedback loop that I think was missing in the past. That PACE, I did a really good job with, and that was one thing I really wanted to emulate, but take to more of a structure, so. Jamie or Connor?
Yeah, I'll just say, look, the importance is apparent in us meeting in July, right? We've already kicked this thing off, and Jen's right, the feedback's gonna be critical because we can't wait for budgets until February, right? We need to have a pretty good idea. I understand it's not gonna be finalized, but we need a really good idea so that we can get out and tell the community and start, you know, because we're, we're not gonna have the bandwidth that the PACE committee did. That work's been done, though, and we can rely and turn to a lot of that work as we share the story and the messaging again, but we've got to get out ahead of this, and I think we talked about, like, by December.
Yeah.
We've got to have this really-
Yeah, about holidays.
Right?
We want to, we want to have a, you know, a preliminary idea of what it will take to balance the budget.
Because we can't wait, we can't wait two extra months after that, we can't go into the first, the second, you know, into two-thirds of the way into the first quarter, it's too late.
Yeah.
And you'll be sharing more about your process this year and how there's some changes to it.
Yes, well, I mean, I think ultimately, it's just gonna come down to what level of risk tolerance does the select board and the school committee have with forecasting earlier than we traditionally would. I think some of it is, you know, each board will have a different view on that, each, you know, CAO is gonna have a different view of that, none of them are necessarily right or wrong, however, in my view, which I tend to make rather clear, and put in writing, which I did to the subcommittee, the underlying fundamentals that have led us here, contrary to what some folks may think, were adjudicated publicly for a year straight, and it's not glamorous or exciting stuff, but it's your fundamental fixed cost structure like health insurance, transportation, out of district special ed, going up by double-digit percentages two years in a row, and we have, and I hope I'm wrong, come holidays, but we don't have reason to think, particularly in health insurance, that that's going to do some 180 turnaround and stabilize. And so, obviously, extremely early to do a forecast for '27 when fiscal year '26 started four weeks ago, but we did pull together using the forecasting tools that PACE was using, what, what would that look like if we do go into next year and health insurance goes up by another 10%, regional school assessments keep jumping, and it's really ugly, assuming we pull stabilization funds out of a budget, which I think needs to be the baseline scenario that the board works with, because the economy is growing, we're not in a major recession, and we can't continue to rely on one-time reserves, and definitely, we already, we used reserves in '25 and '26 to give the community time to do the PACE process, to go through that adjudication, and they made a choice, and they made a very, very clear one by a sizable margin. And so, ultimately, that's gonna be a collaborative process, but I'm making clear, I think where, where I stand, which is, you know, and I outlined in this memo, there's really two choices, and they're the exact same two choices we had going into fiscal '26, which is cut even more or have an override, right? And I'm sure somebody will hear that and say that I'm oversimplifying and we're not trying, like, of course we are, we just voted a 20-year solar agreement tonight, we're gonna keep doing those things. But in the big picture, those are really the choices, and we've already, on the town side, begun cutting more, even positions that made it through the cuts going into '26, like in the planning department, which is now closed to walk-ins because they took a staff cut, because I am preparing for that scenario as a baseline, that we'll be cutting millions more from town and school operating budgets going into '27 if there is not an override.
And to hire somebody at this point, knowing that we're, you know, that could be-
Right.
That we're facing, we don't want to hire people and then have to let them go in less than a year.
In many cases, I think it's worth using the public meeting to point out, there are certain positions of which there's only a single one, like a planning director, that you, you, you need to replace.
Yeah.
Right? So there are some folks who will look and say, oh, the, you know, I see a job ad, they must, everything must be completely fine, and we wish it were true, but there's some, especially, I won't speak for the schools, they have many regulatory requirements they have to fill, but we have certain things, you, you can't just not have a town clerk. Doesn't matter how bad your budget is, it's just not an option, it's not legal. But those positions that we're not required, in many cases, we're either shifting or just cutting if they become vacant. And so that's, that leads to, and this memo was provided to the board, it also lives on, it's online, nothing I'm saying here is on the town's website at easton MA.us/fy27budget. There's kind of two flavors of each of those approaches of cut or go for an override. Cuts can be, really pull those stabilization funds out as a revenue source going into next year to basically get to hit, hit a true bottom, so then at least we can start to grow from that new, much lower baseline. And the, the alternative is a gradual drawdown, which has, you know, other, there's pros and cons, none of these are, all of these are terrible choices, when, if looked through the lens of service preservation, but absent an override, that's really out the window. It's, to Jen's point, it's, it's about kind of core, essential function preservation, and continuing to draw down our reserves, we spent a decade building, is not like a, a posture I would recommend we start from. That could, of course, mitigate the severity of some cuts. And again, it's gonna be a decision we make collaboratively, and I'll look to the board for your direction on that, as I'm sure the superintendent will, the school committee and finance committee, but those are really hard choices, and as we know, going through this spring, even if the board were to consider putting an override, whether that's a smaller override or a menu override of some type, in front of voters again next spring, we still do need to build a budget that assumes no override. And so, to, that was an extremely long answer to Jamie's question of yes, I think we all would be well-served, we haven't done it before, so I just, I don't know the details yet, to have a, a, a better idea of what that baseline looks like around the holidays. Big question mark is GIC doesn't set its rates till February, but I mean, still, you can come up with a few baseline scenarios.
Well, I'll just say, and I want to speak to that, I'm glad you mentioned that, GIC in February, because Blue Cross Blue Shield just this week mentioned how much money they're losing in Massachusetts, like their rates, and I have it. It's, happens to be through Illinois, because that's where my company's headquartered, but my rates and my open enrollment just happened, so August 1st, my rates went up 20%. That's not even through Massachusetts, that's because I'm a PPO out of Illinois, but when they said that about Massachusetts, it really concerned me, because we're gonna have an unknown number, and if it's another double-digit and-
Which it very well could be.
I, I don't see it not being, just given the state of what we know now, and-
Well, it's all of healthcare, even, I saw something about, what do they call it now? Over at Good Sam, it's not Good Sam, but Boston Medical, they're, they're cutting a lot of jobs over there right now because of budget issues, so it's, it's really-
It's an incredibly difficult time to try to navigate these issues, right? And we, we, it, we are in a very difficult position in a policymaking posture, right? Because the organization-level challenges that are straining us and having to make us make these choices to cut where we can, which is personnel, are the same things that are pressing all of our taxpayers and their personal lives, right? So folks are hearing us say, well, we need override to pay for our health insurance, they're saying, my healthcare just went up 20%, and they're not wrong. So it's just a really hard situation, and so, getting in front of it, I appreciate that Jen and Jamie and no one, no one on subcommittee is saying, oh, it should be PACE 2.0, because to, to the points made by the, the select board members, the, the recommendation was not adopted at the polls, and that's okay, that's the voter's choice, but it doesn't change any of the underlying facts-
Right.
-of the work that, that committee did. Obviously, that, the, the, the recommendation that PACE arrived at from those facts was not something that was palatable electorally, but that doesn't change that that is a lot of really good data that exists and does not need to be replicated, right?
Yeah, you got a really solid foundation to work with, so.
Well, I really like what you're talking about doing with bringing that information back to the boards, because that group can sometimes work as its own little silo.
Yes.
And I don't think we always got enough information back to the board, and I'm sure the school committee and the finance committee would probably agree with that as well, so.
Yeah, everyone on the board seemed, everyone in the committee rather seemed to feel positive about this suggestion, and I think there was, you know, consensus that it was a, a value add, so.
Great.
I'm excited to see how it unfolds. You know, when, earlier, I want to go back to a premise earlier about the no stone unturned and go back to the pile, like, going back to the pile means like making really difficult decisions, and that's where we're at now, like, there's no new thing we haven't found.
Yeah.
Now it's going back and starting to make these painful decisions, and I think the most impactful statement of the entire meeting we had came from Dr. Cabral, who said that when you go through a situation like what we're going through when it comes to staffing and personnel, these kinds of impacts take 10 years to bounce back from once you hit the level of like catastrophic failure, and I kind of, you know, I wanted to be sure that I understood what failure meant, and I was like, oh, well, when, when will we be there? And she said, oh, no, we are in it. So we are in this period now where we are going to see a long road ahead for getting out of this, as we know, once staffing problems start to creep up, it takes a while to fix those things, and when you're operating with the situation we have, that's, that's very scary, so.
Well, I think that most people in the public won't start to see it, I mean, they'll see it after school starts.
Yes.
Probably in the fall and ramping up to the winter when they see some of the, some of the changes that have had to be made, so. All right, well, thank you very much, I appreciate your first official update.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, and we'll, we'll send out that template by later this week, it'll be shared, and we'll start just kind of, it will be me and Jamie's job to kind of train the whole board to think about, like, how to get us information in this lens when you hear something, to say, ah, this is a good point to bring back, and we'll keep that process going, so.
We have two excellent representatives on that committee, so I, I applaud you guys for the efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
All right, item 14, the opening of the warrant for the November 10th, 2025 Fall Special Town Meeting.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. We typically have the last board meeting before Labor Day, request the board vote to open the warrant for the Fall Town Meeting. We are recommending November 10th, 2025, this year, that fits within the November holidays, and the principles of town meeting are available, the facility is available, so if that's amenable to the board, we would ask for your vote to open that warrant, and we will send a memo out to departments asking for articles to be submitted no later than September 25th, 2025.
Okay. Craig?
I move to open the warrant for the November 10th, 2025 Special Town Meeting, with the warrant articles to be submitted to, to the town administrator's office no later than September 25th, 2025.
Second.
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, item 15, discussion and vote, adoption of the town administrator's fiscal '26 goals and objectives.
So thank you, Dottie. As the board is aware, my ongoing employment agreement with the town through the select board stipulates that my performance is to be measured annually, publicly, in the spring of a given year against goals and objectives that we mutually execute the previous summer. So attached, I've provided the board with my proposed goals and objectives for the current fiscal year, I'm happy to answer any questions about them or talk through any of them with the board, I gave a little preamble in them that I think is likely highly unsurprising to the select board that the overarching priority this year is stabilizing the town's core safety, regulatory, and mandatory government functions, including winding down or eliminating nonessential programs and functions where possible and planning for either more cuts and/or another potential attempt at an override for fiscal '27. And, you know, we're gonna continue to try to do important strategic things where we can with the staff resources we have, obviously, things like the solar power purchase agreements, we are going to continue to move the ball down the field on important, you know, five, 10, 20-year infrastructure that, no matter how tough an operating year gets, it's, it's really important to keep going, things like designing and planning for sewer at the industrial park, taking advantage of the IMA with the city of Brockton, finalizing the PFAS treatment filtration at the Red Mill Road Water Treatment Plant, supporting DOT and the general contractor with the Elman Washington intersection improvements, the public facilities that are under construction, Swift's Park, so we still have important work going on, that's not all just kind of the doom and gloom of preparing for more cuts. We have a lot of important strategic initiatives that'll be concluding as we head into this period of Climate Action Plan, the master plan update, so supporting either myself or through Sean or other staff resources, those committees complete their missions and then incorporating that into what we do on a go-forward basis will be a, a big priority this year. We have a permitting audit concluding for the planning department as well, for, that is, will be a nice guide to put in the new director's hand and say, here's areas of opportunity for improvement, so that, you know, we can make sure we're doing the right thing with our administrative approach, so that if, you know, folks are trying to build something, permit something that our regs say they can, that we make that as constructive and reliable, predictable as a process as possible. Yeah, there's the tricentennial's finishing up this year, I can take very little credit, only indirect for that, it's largely, those volunteers are incredible, but supporting that, our senior financial assistance is spinning up this year, the special act of the legislature that we petitioned for, through the Home Rule Petition, that's actually advertising now with the assessors, it's in the town crier, it's on their website, I'm sure they have it at Frobbingham, that is the unique senior means-tested tax break program administered through the assessor's office for folks who qualify for the circuit breaker income tax and other relevant qualifications that can help offset some of the costs of voter-approved debt exclusions. Have a lot of work we have to do with bargaining, we're currently bargaining with fire union, and then the other six town unions expire at the end of this year, so that's going to be a very large priority. And we have department head transitions, you know, two, potentially three in this fiscal year, so recruiting and replacing those mission-critical positions is a priority. And then, you know, talking about the town government itself, we will continuously be looking at opportunities to refocus what our operating priorities are, to really narrow in on the statutory and regulatorily required functions, and again, not that any of us, you know, want to kind of get up and go to work to, to spin programs off, but we, we are where we are, and much like any business, you know, has to go through haircuts and close things down, not to minimize it, but, but, the, this, this was picked, and it is our responsibility to implement it, and we will, and that will take a significant amount of continuous effort. As the board knows, I'm the chair now of the SEMREC Board of Directors for the Four-Town 911 District, we are working with the town of Foxborough to start prepping for the World Cup coming next year, so that's gonna be a very, very intense planning effort, so that'll certainly keep my office and myself busy as well, and, you know, continue building relationships with our legislative delegation and lobbying for Easton at every chance, particularly for financial matters, whether that's through multi-district litigation or class action lawsuits, or on Beacon Hill, to try to fight for the resources that a community needs, so that's where our focus will be, happy to answer any questions.
So Connor, I'm very glad that we're gonna spend the next year working together and accomplishing, obviously, your goals, but the community's goals, and, and the hard work that's ahead of us, so I'm really, really happy that you continue to be the town administrator, and that we've got an incredibly strong supporting cast with Sean and Elizabeth too, and, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of work, I know we've already shared some of our frustration in previous meetings, but now's the time that we just roll up our sleeves, I'm excited that Jen's chairing the budget subcommittee, because that's gonna, it's gonna do a lot of heavy lifting early, so that we, there are very few surprises, and we have a lot of time, and I think communication is key, that's, that's what the PACE committee did so well, worked so hard at doing, and the outcomes were what they were, and now we need to find out a way to communicate as well earlier and let people know the, the situation, and, and it's not gonna be easy, right? There's gonna be a lot of people that don't want to hear it, but that's what we're tasked with, so a lot of what you do is the hard, heavy lifting, so I'm excited for you to be part of it.
I, I always appreciate the thoughtfulness you put into writing out your goals and objectives, as always, I always worry that you have too many things on your plate, but you've done a fantastic job of actually being more mindful, given the situation we're in, that being said, I do still worry, but I also know that you always are, you communicate very, very closely with the, the board, and we're always aware of challenges and things that happen, and, you know, that I expect that to include if there are situations where folks are hitting burnout or bandwidth because of the heavy load that's been placed on a smaller number of, of staff across the town. across the town. So, you know, thank you, the communication's solid, I think that your objectives are in the right place for this moment in time, so thank you, Connor.
Thanks.
I want to echo what Jen and Jamie said, that I'm very pleased to work with you for another year, and hopefully far into the future. I find that, once again, you've very comprehensive, very thoughtful document, and I'm looking forward to helping you as much as I can going forward, and I hope the community will recognize some of the difficulties that we're facing, and that they will step up once again and maybe make some different decisions come next year. So thank you, Connor, I appreciate it.
And I'll just add, for people that are watching at home, these goals and objectives will be posted online, so these are the metrics that we use to measure Connor's performance throughout the year, before the next election of select board, we will regroup, and then we, we do Connor's evaluation, and we measure it, since Connor has been the town administrator, he's received nothing less than, exceeds expectations as a general average on all of these, so it's a very high bar you've set, and I hope that people will take the time to look at this, read it, see what we're focused on, it's not, we don't just wing it and, you know, head down a number of different paths, it's very focused at the beginning of the year when we do this, and it guides not only you, but all of the goals and objectives of your department heads and the people that contribute to this, so I appreciate it being so clear, it's still a heavy lift, you know, it's very focused, there's no additional new initiatives, you know, really, that we've had in other years, but we have a lot on our plate that are really important and exciting initiatives to keep managing forward, and figuring out how we're going to, you know, what this new year and beyond looks like is going to be a big task, so thank you for getting that to us, we appreciate it.
I move to adopt town administrator's fiscal 26 goals and objectives as presented.
Second.
That's Bajra and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, we're getting close to the end, number 16, acceptance of Community Preservation Commission resignation Tom Broussard for a seat expiration date of June 30th, 2026. So we have received a resignation from Tom Broussard, you know, I think, I saw emails that people sent back to Tom expressing their appreciation, he has been, he was an amazing select board member, he's been amazing on the Community Preservation Commission, he puts 110% into everything he does, and really appreciate all the work that he did.
Yeah, just like to comment, right, because that is, it's a tough one for all of us that had the opportunity to work with him and Dottie, you and Craig for a long time, and, so it's tough for us to lose him in that professional capacity, because you're right, everything he did, came prepared, the most well-prepared, well-read, understood, and expected that of his fellow team members, so I think it rose, you know, everybody was forced to kind of up their game when you worked with Tom, because you knew how prepared he was going to come, so if he wanted to get called out in a meeting, show up unprepared. But that's, that's how we got so many great things done, and that's how we started to also prove to the community that we're not just checking boxes over here, we're taking the time and doing the due diligence, and there's people that really care to learn from subject matter experts, and, so I think everyone at this, here learned from Tom at one point or another, and, but, and that's what he gave, as a citizen, just like us, held down a full-time job as an executive, and raising a family, kids are my kids' ages, and he found the time, and I respect that, because I think he gave certainly at times more than I do.
Yeah, learned so much from Tom over the years, and, you know, he is just such a big champion for this community, so it's a huge loss that we, he's taken some time, but, you know, just huge thank you to Tom for everything he's done.
I've known Tom for a long, long time, and he took the, took on the finance committee when it was struggling a bit in the 2016, 2017 period of time, and then he stepped into the select board, and I always relied upon Tom for the economic understanding of things that were, of municipal government that I was not totally up on, it's not my area of expertise, but it was Tom's, or it is Tom's, did an incredible job on the PACE committee, he and Nancy were just phenomenal, and it's not like he's deceased, he's still in town, he's still around, so hopefully we can lean on him sometime in the near future when he decides, okay, it's time to get back involved, and I consider him, and Jen, his wife, are good friends, and I very much appreciate their involvement in Easton and their support for this community, so.
So there will be a vacancy on the Community Preservation Committee, and people could take a look at that. So Craig, if you want to make a motion with regret of accepting Tom's resignation?
With regret, I accept the resignation of Tom Broussard from the Community Preservation Committee, the seat expiration of June 30th, 2026, and with our appreciation for Tom's efforts on behalf of this community.
Second, with regret and appreciation.
So that's Bajra and Stacy, and this is a roll call vote.
Stebbins, Broussard.
Stacy Broussard.
Bulgenetti, Broussard.
Bajra, Broussard.
All right, the next, we have acceptance of minutes of July 28th, 2025.
So move, Bajra.
Second, Stacy.
Bajra and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. By the way, I like the new format a lot, in the minutes with the summary upfront, and then the votes underneath, I think it's a lot easier to read and follow, so, thank you. Next, executive, acceptance of executive session minutes for approval and release of April 28th, 2025, and May 5th, 2025.
So move, Bajra.
Second, Stacy.
That's Bajra and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. And then, release of previously approved select board minutes of...
Sorry, there's a typo on my part, it's a release previously approved executive session minutes.
Oh, I shouldn't have caught that.
Well, I missed it.
Release of previously approved executive session minutes, so we've already voted to approve these, but we hold them, to not release them until the matter of that, what was in that executive session is over, so if it was a contract negotiation, we wait until that negotiation is completed, so the dates on these are March 13th, 2023, April 10th, 2023, April 26th, 2023, May 22nd, 2023, September 26th, 2023, November 6th, 2023, December 4th, 2023, and December 18th, 2023.
So move, Bajra.
Second, Stacy.
That's Bajra and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, next, town administrator notes.
I said most of mine of the PFAS litigation, but I'll note regarding Elm Street in Washington, so that's a Mass DOT job that the town has been excited to see for quite some time, so construction crews are expected to mobilize on Elm and Washington Street for the intersection improvement project, folks should expect traffic impacts and delays, and we appreciate their patience in advance, it's a temporary, sometimes, you know, few years temporary, but temporary inconvenience for permanent improvement. Elm and Washington Street Intersection Improvement Project is being done by Mass DOT, it involves comprehensive reconstruction and widening of the roadway to enhance safety, accessibility, and infrastructure at the intersection, this will include adding a signal at this intersection, which is something that folks, both on the town officials, but also folks who live here, have wanted to see for years, and it is funded through state DOT funds. This is dedicated webpage with details on the project, including reference back to the DOT pages, what to expect and how to stay updated, that's at easton MA.us/ElmWashington, one word, so, that's it for me.
Thank you. Sean?
Sure, update on CCAP, Jen and I were able to take part in the advisory group meeting, the second and final advisory group meeting, which is made up of the core CCAP group plus community stakeholders, it was very productive a couple weeks ago, and we feel really good, and there's a lot of, we had lost some of the momentum with the pause in the project over the spring, but we picked it back up, and people were really engaged, and we got some great feedback, so we'll take that time to incorporate the feedback into the goals, strategies, and actions of the plan, and then we'll get a draft of that plan that CCAP will review at an upcoming meeting, and then at that point, they'll endorse that, it might be over two meetings, so they'll review it, endorse it, and then bring it to the select board for a presentation, hopefully in October.
Excellent.
And then, just mention of the block party for the tricentennial committee, we won't be meeting before the next tricentennial event, which is on September 6th, the block party's going to be at the Governor Ames Estate from 12 to 4, and there's a whole bunch of activities that are set up and ready to go, and we're looking forward to it.
Great.
Including?
Axle.
Axlering.
And the, I wouldn't...
With real axes.
That makes me a little nervous, but I was looking at the...
Yeah, we've been working on the insurance and all the other pieces on the back end.
The opening of the 50-year time capsule, too.
Yes, that'll be very exciting.
At 3 o'clock.
And I'll save, I'll save the really good stuff from this past weekend for select board notes.
Jamie?
Well, I'm not, I don't want to take anyone's thunder, but I do want to recognize the Lions Club, and maybe you were going to mention that, for all the volunteers that came out this past weekend for the tricentennial bike race, and not only the ones that helped set up the day before, but all the Lions volunteers that were there at 6:00 AM didn't leave till after 5:00 PM, and I understand there were racers going off from 8:00 AM and then didn't wrap up till after 3:00, so those volunteers, and we know it wasn't weather like today.
Right.
It was hot and humid, and there's just a lot of amazing volunteers over there.
For sure.
I have nothing for today.
Okay, Craig?
We had a wonderful time at the Brockton Rocks.
Oh, yeah.
It was, it was a terrific evening, now, not to mention that the Rocks, the Rocks won both games, but the enthusiasm of the crowd, the enthusiasm of the ownership of that, of that baseball team, the president of that team was out cleaning up the, the infield maintenance during, between the games, you don't see that very often.
Connor and I clean this room sometimes.
It was, it was...
And Elizabeth, actually, I'm sorry.
It was a lot of fun, and, and I think the four of us who threw out the first pitches in the second game, we didn't, none of us embarrassed ourselves, which is really very, very nice. I do have pictures that my granddaughter took, a video which Dottie has, which I will send to my colleagues, so you can see it, too.
Great.
And it was, it was impressive and a lot of fun.
That was never anything on my bucket list, but I feel like that was, that was a missing piece, because everybody should get to throw the first pitch at a baseball game, I was really nervous, though.
How were the crowds?
They were good.
They were pretty good, yeah.
Because I love it, I just, it's sad to say, I discovered the Brockton Rocks this year, we've now been to like five games, I'm sorry we missed Saturday, but I think it's an amazing take.
It is such, you know, I, we used to go and take the kids all the time when they were little, and the concession food is very inexpensive, like it, we would go there, the kids, they have a lot of fun things for the kids to do, they can go out in the fields and play catch with the players, they have a lot of things happening, at the end of the game, they let everybody run the bases, before we went out to throw the first pitch, Dale Karister said to the general manager, do you think we can run the bases? And he says, yeah, after the game, so with everybody else. So it was a lot of fun, I forgot how much I enjoyed it, and we stayed till the end, it was, it was very fun.
It was great, very well done.
I'll just add, in the list of fun things happening in Easton, Wednesday night is our last Wednesday night summer concert series, we have been so successful with that, we've had to get a police detail, so we now block off the area of the rockery, which gives more areas for people to sit and, and enjoy the music, I think we had close to 400 people last week.
Wow.
It's, it's really amazing, and so this band is called 60's Thunder, it's a real fan favorite, just a fun, fun group, so it'll be a nice way to end that series, until we have the end of summer concert series on September 21st, which is a Sunday afternoon from noon to 4:00, I believe, and we shut down that whole area, so it's more than just music, there's artists and all kinds of things for people to do, things, fun things for kids, and, you know, when you mentioned the Lions Club, the Lions Club is a really big, they're a sponsor, and they also give us a lot of help as well, so I appreciate you calling that out, and if people want to join the Lions Club, reach out, we'll, many of us are Lions Club members, and it, the thing I like about them is that you can do as much or as little as you want, sometimes you're hesitant to sign up for a committee because you feel like you're going to get over requests, and they don't, if you help with one thing, that's great, if you help with 50 things, it's great, too, so. And with that, I will say that we are going to go into an executive session under purpose two and three of Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A respectively, to discuss strategy in relation to contract negotiations with non-union personnel Connor Reed and Justin Alexander, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Easton Firefighters Local 2790 Collective Bargaining Unit. We are going to, go, enter into the executive session, not to return to, back to open session, so I will take a motion and a second, and then it's a roll call vote to enter into executive session.
Move to enter into executive session.
Second.
That's Bajra and Stacy?
Stebbins, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Bulgenetti, yes?
Bajra, yes.
Great, and I just want to say thank you to ECAT for being here again tonight, reminding me to put my microphone back on, and for all the great work they do for not only our board, but for the whole community, so thanks so much, everyone, it's a wrap.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.